I'm gonna, do I just reconvene the meeting?
Yes.
Since I called it off.
Yes.
The meeting is reconvened and we have two members on the phone and the rest of the members are here. So, we're able to reconvene and as I said a moment ago, we're gonna go right to public participation for our guests and then we'll go back to the regular meeting after that. Mertz, if you'd walk us through that.
I have two public participation forms. If somebody else has one, I'd be interested in having that so that we could get you able to speak to the State Board of Education. The first one is Dale Rogers. Mr. Rogers, if you could just come to the end of the table.
All right. Can I bring my big water in case I have a Marco Rubio moment? I don't want to have some...
Oh. All right. And you've had too many of the Roy Rogers jokes already in your life, right Dale?
Uh, the Mr. Rogers is starting to run neck and neck with the Roy Rogers.
Okay.
Actually, my namesake died last week. I was named after Dale Robertson. That was my dad's favorite movie star.
Oh.
Where the Dale came from.
Dale's with the network and, but assuming you're representing them as we've had representatives in most meetings.
Yes, yes. All right. Well, good afternoon and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm Dale Rogers. I'm here, like we've said, representing the Network of Michigan Educators. My association with the network is a result of me achieving National Board Certification for Career and Technical Education in 2007. I'm currently a CTE teacher at Novi High School, primarily teaching pre-engineering, computer aided design, and video game design. Some of you may remember one of my fellow network members, Steve Kelly, that spoke to you last year. Steve presented his ideas and his, and the success he's had with the concept of the flip classroom. And like Steve, I'm an old guy. I've just begun my fourth decade as a teacher. And like Steve, I still believe I have much enthusiasm for teacher, for teaching and still got that fire in the belly drive to continue to fine tune my craft to benefit my students as much as I can. As mentioned in the handout, that I forgot to hand out, as mentioned in the handout here. There we go. I have a slightly different take on the flip. That is, taking the flip to the next level not only changes the lecture slash homework idea, but flips the class from being a teacher-centered class to that of a student-centered class. And I've been using computer-based videos and instructional tools since 1999. And needless to say, I was a bit envious when I saw a guy featured on 60 Minutes a few years ago, being hailed for his innovations using video as an instructional tool. But I've gotta give kudos to Sal Khan and the Khan Academy for bringing attention to what potential this technology has. Part of what prompted me to begin creating my own custom video tutorials was the fact that some students weren't always attentive when I gave a presentation. Can you believe they couldn't be attentive to me? Also, I found myself a bit frustrated when I had given what I thought was probably a near-perfect presentation to a class, but only to have a student miss it for some reason or another. You know, Bueller, Bueller, where you at? But once I began using my own video tutorials, I noticed a significant improvement in the performance of my students. Much of the curriculum in career and technical education courses requires demonstration of skills for various hands-on techniques and tasks. And using video that students can view and review at their own pace really benefit, benefits most CTE courses. In addition, visuals, visuals from videos such as these benefit students that might otherwise struggle with interpreting technical reading due to maybe a disability or language deficiency or, you know, a teacher from the south with a southern accent like me, you know. But there's some teachers that feel threatened by this technology and maybe it's not so much the technology, but the way, you know, teachers fear how some politicians and reformers might abuse the technology to downgrade the value of teachers in the classroom. And in fact, whenever I presented at conferences like McCall, I'm always posed the question, aren't you afraid that you won't be needed as a teacher? Well, guess what? I've been using this technology since 1999 and I'm still gainfully employed, thank goodness. But, you know, it's more than that. You know, even with the videos, while they may provide good explanations and examples, once students begin working on their activities, they still need oversight and guidance. They still have questions. And, you know, as, as well as I try to make my videos, they're never gonna be 100% effective for 100% of the students. And some students just need that personal interaction more than others. Work still needs to be evaluated and graded. However, this tool's allowed me to give more individualized attention to my students and help them focus on the lesson at hand. However, if you came to my classroom, like most visitors, you probably observed that I'm still a pretty busy guy. Plus, I strongly believe the timely whiteness of a teacher, the teachable moments, the personal interactions, and the student-teacher relationships are things that are vital in education for our young people and just can't be replaced by digital technologies. To conclude, with 18 seconds to go, I feel fortunate to work in a school district that provides me with the resources and the autonomy to utilize technologies for the benefits of my students. I want to thank the Network of Michigan Educators for inviting me to speak today and thank you again for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No wonder your videos are right on target, Dale.
Our next speaker is Angela Wilson.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Angela Wilson. I am a Meridian Township trustee. I am a parent of Okamis student here in the area and I am here today as Chair of the Legislative Committee of the Okamis Parent Council. And we are a group of parents, you know what a PTA is at the school level. Well, what we work on are policy and education issues at the district level. And so, I am here, I had the wonderful opportunity to attend your education forum in Ann Arbor last night. It was great. I'm happy as well as all the parents that I network with throughout the state that you're offering this opportunity for us to be part of the conversation, for you to communicate with us as parents and as a community, what's going on with education, education reform in the state. So, I wanted to speak about having an expansion of these community forums. I was surprised to see that there wasn't one in the Lansing area. Wonderful opportunity. There were some legislators that attended the Ann Arbor event. Just think about if you had it here in the Lansing area, how many opportunities those legislators would have to come and hear from the public. Wonderful questions, wonderful discussions. I want to thank Eileen and John for showing up to that and being there. This is what we want. We are the public in public education. We are the owners together collectively as a community and so we need to have more discussions like this. And that's what I would hope that you guys can consider and work into your schedule. And I can answer any questions if you'd mind.
We don't do questions and answers here, but I know the board discussed this morning, they are adding some, including the Lansing area, if I'm not mistaken.
I talked last night, it's Angela.
Yes.
That, you know, we're, I think, thank you for coming and sharing what you experience in the utility of these things. So, if board members are interested and if you all and others can help us put something together, I hope we can do one in Lansing.
Great. I'm glad you brought that because I would be willing to, more than happy to help facilitate whatever you need to get this going in the Lansing area. Thank you.
I can work with her.
Okay, terrific.
I'll leave my card. Thank you.
Are there any more public participation forms? Thank you.
That was it, huh? Okay. And Dan and Cassandra on the phone, as I said, did you say there's no close-ups?
Not yet.
Oh.
You're not threatening one, are you?
Yeah.
When it's, when, my turn is up?
Right.
Mercifully, there are no close-ups. Faces for radio. Or as Frank Kelly once said, former Attorney General, he said, "Politics is show business for ugly people."
Oh. No comment. So, we're at item K, which is action on Superintendent of Public Instruction. John leads this discussion.
We have had the opportunity to have a fulsome evaluation discussion with our superintendent. I think constructively and happily, it focused almost exclusively on how can we work even closer together and what are the major priorities that we can move together and tangibly advance for improving education in the, in the years ahead. I know on, on behalf of the board, I can say, we, A, very much appreciate your leadership and helping us work together to align and move behind major education improvement and change directions. Very much appreciate your leadership and management of the Department of Education as witnessed this morning's representation with much diminished staff and resources, but not diminished impact and effort and, and strong management and positive management and supportive management of the department. Very much appreciated and noted. And, and also being a leader out there in the state for engaging constructively and effectively with all the constituencies that care about and are engaged in education and helping us in a world that is not any straight lines, you know, work with all of our constituencies, governor, legislature, the education stakeholder groups in effective, often nuanced and, and important ways. So, I very much appreciate that leadership, Mike. And so, I'm gonna recommend that we move, there's an amendment to our agreement that in essence says, based on satisfactory annual performance evaluation of Mr. Michael P. Flanagan, Superintendent of Public Instruction, the parties agree to modify the agreement that was entered into originally in 2005 and has been modified several times. And that we would modify the agreement to extend the contract to a mutually agreed upon date of July 5th, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2015. That Michael Flanagan agreed that Mr. Flanagan shall receive the same salary increases and/or decreases, equivalents of those provided to and/or taken from classified state employees. Let me just note, one of the non-perks of major state leadership positions is you get actually paid less than, meaning the folks at the top, governor, superintendent, and others are unfortunately, but appropriately bound by sort of the, the expectation of what's a appropriate salary for leading public officials that the taxpayers are willing to pay. And I appreciate your willingness to be in concert with the other state top leadership in the nature of the salary because obviously there are superintendents who don't do as much and aren't in the position that you are that are receiving much more. But I think you know that's one of the perks of the job here. And all of the provisions would continue in effect from the previous contract. So, that is a amendment that I would ask my board members, fellow board members, to support.
So, it's moved by John and supported by Richard. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay. Well, thank you very much, John. Appreciate your... Thanks, John. I do appreciate your comments and I appreciate the conversation we had today. Very helpful. And Dan and Cassandra, appreciate your being on the phone for that. That also was helpful. And, you know, I'm paid well, so I don't want to have any false feeling bad. The announcements recently of some very, very well-paid superintendents in the state, you know, have given some, given some attention to that, but I think they're deserving of what they get and a lot of the tough jobs they're in. But I just want to say, it is a pleasure to work here at the department. And I do think we've developed a relationship, board, superintendent, team, beyond me, that works very well for the kids of this state. And just appreciate it more than I might be able to say. So, thanks again for that support and encouragement and hopefully, well, we'll leave it at that. And so, we're gonna go to the next item and the next item is introduction of MDE employees. These are new folks that have joined us. And our three deputies, as usual, are gonna take that up, I think, starting with Sally and introduce our folks.
Okay. I would like to...
And these are while Sally's getting it. These are almost all replacement folks and many, if not all of them, are federally funded, but happy to have them on board as full MDE employees. We're just glad the feds are still funding for now.
Okay. I would like to introduce Christine Davidson in the Office of Education Improvement and Innovation. Christine, you guys are pretty good. Good afternoon, I'm Chris Davidson and I am the School of Research and Grant Consultant. And I work with schools in the state that are receiving the federal program grant from the U.S. Department of Education. I provide specialized services to them. Ultimately, our goal is to have rapid turnaround in their student achievement. And currently, we are conducting audits of those schools that are multi-district schools. So, that's been an interesting adventure for me. So, I'm very excited to be a part of the MDE team and the OEI team.
Thank you.
And then Joseph Venison is in Career and Technical Education.
My name is Joseph Venison. I'm with the Office of Public Education and I'm a chief educational consultant. Before I came to stay here, I worked for University of Michigan and Wayne State University for the last almost 10 years. My responsibility here is to work at a few of those schools who are participating in Perkins Grant, a federal grant for public education. I'm still in the training, the work, but I'm except driving two hours from Detroit every day. I'm getting up in the morning, so great job.
Thank you. So, does Susan?
She's got one.
Happy to introduce Joseph Diaz, who is in our Child Development and Care.
Good afternoon. I've come out of here from the Lansing Police Department. I retired and joyfully took the job here at MDE. And so, I'm grateful for that opportunity. I work with the writer enrollment unit and over there, we go all the homeless daycare providers, the analysts in the unit, so I can get all the administrative reviews for the folks that we turn down. So, thank you.
Did you have to turn your pistol? Kyle, you got competition now, buddy.
He's armed, I can't do anything.
I'd like to introduce Javier Sanchez. And Mike, when you challenged us this morning to bring some youth to the department, I think I get the award. Javier?
Thank you. I'm gonna be working in the Office of Financial Management. I'm gonna be working in the cash management system, assisting recipients with the dispersments of the state and federal grants. And I was previously with the Department of Corrections.
Thank you. Well, welcome all. I had a chance to meet. Thanks so much for, and you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you'd like and you're welcome not to also, which... Why does everyone always take us up on?
Because they're busy.
They're busy.
They weren't sent to the State Board of Education. Community service.
So, Marty, you're gonna join us, I think. And item L, we're moving right to the state and federal legislative update and it's kind of a Marty/Cassandra team report. Marty's gonna kick it off. Cassandra is the Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee that met on March 4th, so there'll be some, some work on that also, or some reporting on that also. Marty, if you'd like to start.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Legislatively, there are a couple of major issues that the Legislative Committee at least discussed, if not are going to act on in a few moments. But there's the legislative-wise, there's a bill introduced in the House to, again, try to codify the Education Achievement Authority. As you recall, a similar bill was introduced and worked on last session, but it did not pass by the end of the session. So, they have reintroduced it and they had a House Education Committee meeting last week in which the governors, what's his title? Bill Ruston, he's their, like their policy?
Strategist.
Strategist, right. Vision guy? He testified as well as the Chancellor of the EAA and her, and his Chief Academic Officer. And they testified and there was, they testified for at least a good hour, if not more, and then they had a couple of other people testify and, and there's no, I'm not sure what the acceleration of that bill is going to be. Could be this week, could be months from now. I don't know. I'm not really sure. I know that, I think I mentioned at the last, if not at the legislative meeting, but maybe this last meeting, is that, that is a priority of the governor. So, that, that bill may, may find some quick legs if they have the votes. Another bill, or a set of bills in the House are bills to amend the Michigan Merritt curriculum and to change certain portions of them. I think we've discussed here at this table before, including taking out possibly the Algebra II requirement or the World Languages requirement. There is an education, a Senate Education meeting, Committee meeting tomorrow. And so, they're going to take up the Michigan Merritt curriculum as a subject. There's not necessarily a bill they're gonna be taking up, but it's gonna be taken up as a subject. There's also a House Education Appropriations Committee meeting this week just to take testimony as the budgets continue their process. But that is from the legislative standpoint and I know that the Legislative Committee worked very hard and the Chair, Cassandra, did put out a couple of statements on some issues and shared them with the board and the board had feedback and so I will gladly turn it over to Cassandra.
Thanks, Marty. Um, here, so legislative committee met, uh, so we're going to have to wait until, and at that time, the EAA bill had not been introduced yet. So, we don't have a statement and we really didn't get an opportunity to discuss the EAA bill at the legislative committee. But we did have an opportunity to talk about Michigan Merritt curriculum though. And as a result, we hope to gather a great statement and we must be getting around shortly. And I'm happy to read that out loud. I would ask that we consider, since there is now potentially a movement or a disappearing of the Common Core bill that Representative McMillan has introduced, that we might want to consider adding a statement into the bill about our commitment to the Common Core standards as well. But the statement as written so far and written follows, "The State Board of Education and the Department of Education agree with the Governor and the Legislature that our children and the state public education system falls in key to Michigan's future. We recognize that in changing times that students are most likely to succeed if they are well prepared for lifelong learning and necessary career changes and opportunities arise. None of this will happen for our students without consistency, stability, and rigor for our educational system. The Michigan Merritt curriculum allows students to build skills and competencies in a variety of contexts, including rigorous career technical programs. As such, the State Board of Education reaffirms its belief in the rigorous standards defined in the Michigan Merritt curriculum. The results of the MMC are evident in continuous improvement in student outcomes. Each year, statewide graduation rates increase by 1.9 percent and students continue to show improvement on the Michigan Merritt examination, with overall composite scores for Michigan High School juniors on the ACC, college entrance exam increases four years in a row. Recently released fall 2012 needs results, some students gave for reading, math, and writing in all grades from most demographic groups. Michigan is heading in the right direction. Now is not the time to turn back the clock on Michigan's strong curriculum." And with that, I would open it up to the session.
Do you want to start with a motion for discussion or...
Yeah, Cassandra, this is John. Could I offer to move support of this very good statement with the amendment that we discussed after the Michigan Merritt Curriculum MMC in the second paragraph insert and the Common Core to reinforce that both, both of those, they're not only aligned, they are represent the competencies that we need for college and career readiness and we do not want to abandon that and let, go back to the time when any school district teaches anything it wants in any different way. So, I would move support of that with that amendment.
Say that again, John, please.
It's basically just adding three, four words in the last paragraph, or last sentence of the second paragraph.
Yeah.
As such, Michigan Merritt Curriculum and the Common Core reaffirms its belief in the rigorous standards. That's what was recommended by our staff as appropriate language because apparently, as Cassandra noted, not only are there particular takeouts of the Michigan Merritt curriculum under consideration, whether it's foreign language or Algebra II, there's also a effort to have us abandon our commitment to the Common Core as a stage.
So, it was moved by John and it was supported by Lupe. And discussion, Kathleen and then Eileen?
Well, I support the statement as it is, but I wanted to add something about, since the bills specifically want to remove requirement for, for foreign language, that we put something in specifically about retaining the importance and I, when I, I tried to do it on the computer and I got it, but I couldn't get it sent to everybody. I need some help. So, I brought it with me. Anyway, I thought that we could add, "It is also essential to retain foreign language instruction, which we encourage being taught in elementary and middle school." And I thought we could put that after the sentence, the, that was added before, "The Michigan Merritt curriculum allows students to build skills and competencies in a variety of contexts, including rigorous career and technical programs." And I thought we could add that sentence. And the other thought I had was someplace we ought to put something about the Algebra II, which they want to change, to, to something to the effect that as for modifying the requirement for Algebra II, the legislature has previously allowed modifications. No more are needed now.
John, any thoughts?
And Cassandra and others are there, I certainly don't object and think it's made help, but did you have any other reason for not enumerating various things and just think it's stronger to say the Common Core and the Michigan Merritt as is? I welcome your perspective on all of these additions to your good statement.
No, well, I, those are the things that, well, they're trying to get rid of the Common Core and they're trying to get rid of foreign language, they're trying to get rid of Algebra II. So, I thought those are the things we ought to focus on in addition to this good statement. So, that, my suggestion was to do that, to add the one about, the sentence about foreign language and then, I'm not sure where to put this one about Algebra II, but maybe we don't have to say everything, but just something. There was something in one of these ECS, we get this newsletter from ECS, there was a report on New York State where they are emphasizing, they're giving an award to schools for kids to become bilingual because they are, they're really stressing the need for foreign language instruction. And that's true in other states and to remove that requirement just makes no sense now in this global economy, the global, globalization of the world and everybody goes every place now, so.
Cassandra's Chair, do you have any thoughts about that? Kathy's made a suggested amendment.
I'm fine with the suggested amendment.
So, John and Lupe?
Yeah, and Eileen had something to say about this.
Eileen, please.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna suggest that we consider our audience, which is the legislature. And there are two separate things that I find as commonalities. One is getting rid of the Common Core would reduce math requirements in general. And then Algebra II certainly as a discussion zone for the Michigan Merritt curriculum as an issue. What I was gonna suggest was an alternate way of looking at it, which is to, to end the first part with the middle of the second paragraph, "None of this will happen for our students without consistency, stability, and rigor for our educational system." And then take a new paragraph, "The Michigan Merritt curriculum allows students to build skills and competencies in a variety of contexts, including rigorous career technical programs. The results of the MMC," then that whole paragraph, then another paragraph that would start with, "The Common Core State Standards have realistic and practical expectations that reflect the knowledge and skills students need to enter the workforce or credit-bearing entry courses for two- and four-year college programs." And then say, "As such, the State Board of Education reaffirms its belief in the rigorous standards defined in the Michigan Merritt curriculum and the Common Core State Standards." And then, "Michigan is headed in the right direction," et cetera. I don't know, I mean, I, today it's Algebra II in a different version. You know, the things that they're concerned about or trying to do, I understand, with Algebra II are slightly different than what they were doing before, which is dropping it. And I think the real discussion is consistency, high standards that aim children at being able to be employed and to enter, enter college without remediation. I think that's the message we want to get across. And the, when you look at the Common Core State Standards materials, while there's no World Language requirement, they're aligned already. The, the language requirements, foreign language requirements are aligned, they're working, they're working to do that. While there is no standard for it. And there's no standard for science, it's the next-gen science standards, we're going to get that next. I wouldn't even mind bringing that up in here, the next-generation science standards. All of these are things that children need in Michigan to be able to move freely and easily into the world they're going to face, and to pay our Social Security and Retirement benefits for us.
John, thoughts?
I'm just trying to understand, Eileen, is your point that by enumerating Algebra II and language, or foreign language, we're somehow waving a red flag at the Legislature that might be more destructive than constructive? But we definitely want to have language, foreign language and Algebra II level work with whatever modifications are already available, part of what we support, don't we?
You can enumerate it, but I think you also want to list why Common Core is important, not just lump it together with MMC. Because it's, it is, the thing about Common Core that we don't talk about a lot is that it has reading, writing, speaking, listening, language, and math, which are employability skills that we would not get through the Michigan Merit Curriculum, even though we, you know, we've nibbled at those things.
And just so I'm, so is your sentence or to whatever you inserted, is that the kind of language that does that?
Well, since I don't have it written down, I'm just hoping that somebody recorded it, like Marilyn.
It was very good, I liked it. But are you, would you support having that inserts of yours alongside what Kathleen proposed?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with not fleshing it out more, and...
And I say, let's take it all. I think it's all good. That's my personal opinion.
So taking it all with John and Lupe is good with that? And further discussion, Michelle, please.
I was just going to say, in terms of career readiness, my, I'm one of nine children, my husband's one of 11, I have about 50 nieces and nephews that are out looking for jobs right now. And I can tell you, those who have mastery of a second language are getting the jobs a lot quicker and a lot better paying jobs. So I think it's very clear that to be career-ready, it's a real advantage to have another language. But I had a, I had a question, and it was, I sat in on the legislative meeting, and it was brought up, and I'm not saying that it has to be any amendment, but I just wanted to just bring it up as a, just throw it out there, that, that some of the superintendents, if I'm understanding correctly, or some folks, when it comes to Algebra II, it's not, the modification, as it, to modify things now requires almost like an IEP, like, so you have to have the parents and the whole team of folks to come in. And it's very, it's a very difficult process, and maybe it's, maybe it should be that way. But, but they're saying in order, but that's sort of a sticking point that seems to be in supporting this amendment around, or the legislation around Algebra II, if I'm understanding correctly. So I don't know if there was, if it's worth exploring or talking about ways to address those concerns, but still keeping the math, you know, the math requirements rigorous, but just looking at the process for the modification to see if it could address the concerns of the folks who are, you know, stepping forward.
Marty?
I think there was a discussion during the Legislative Committee about the personal curriculum which, in which you're referring.
Right, right.
And I think there was a discussion with Linda Forward, who was the Director in the Office of Education Innovation and whatever. Oh, yeah, yeah. And about, about simplifying the, our rules or, you know, what we expect from school districts as far as getting to a personal curriculum, which there is no limit, which is one of the, one of the things, one of the reasons we're hearing from the field, that, you know, they're limited to the number of personal curriculums they can provide in their district. There is no, there is no limit to that.
Okay.
So, but we, yeah, we did hear the conversation and your concerns about, about the extent that school districts have to go to adopt a personal curriculum for students.
Okay.
So that's something we can do administratively.
Okay.
And there was a, what empowered us to do that was a modification after the original MMC to the personal curriculum a few years ago, correct?
Correct.
And so it, and I think to Marty's point, I think most of this is innocent. I'm a little concerned with some folks when they keep using, even when we've told them there's no limit to the percentage, that keep saying there's a limit to the percentage. There is no limit to the percentage, right?
Correct.
So I just think that the more we can say that, and the more people, who, most are authentic and don't realize that, they think they're constrained to no more than 2%, they're mixing it up with the federal special education issue. So as a result, there's some genuine confusion. But as I said, there's some special interests that just keep saying it even when we complete it. And with the, with the, what the Legislature did a couple of years ago, together with your points, Michelle, we can work on our own process issues.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll recommunicate that to the field. I think we agreed the other day for a different reason, because of this limitation issue that keeps rearing its head. We sent out a few years ago, I think Abby kind of led that team on how, how to make the personal curriculum alive and easy. Now, how well it was used and distributed, we could take another try at that, and maybe we share that with the Board when we do that also. So is that, that John's, all of that comment, I think, which it sounds like Murts has in general, is that enough discussion? And I think we've got those concepts for folks to feel comfortable? Then...
Is it going to include my suggestion?
Yes, yeah. And Kath, if I may say, just, I think one advantage in addition, the saying about the elementary, I think that's a good advantage to say that, because this is one reason it's been postponed a number of years. The requirement was to let them help set up elementary programs, and many districts have done that. And then you get around the argument that there's not enough time in the day at the high school level, and you also not only get around that argument, you've done the right thing, which is kids are going to learn language earlier. So it's like the best of both worlds. So I think adding that adds value to the statement.
Okay.
So, we're ready for a vote? It was moved by John, supported by Lupe, with some discussion and amendments. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? With those two ayes?
Two ayes.
Yeah, I think so.
Dan and Cassandra?
I would agree.
Okay. Great, thank you. That's...
Cassandra, online?
I need a second statement, and just so you know, it's easier for me to hear if I listen to you through the computer. So, but it's, it's a two-second delay, so if I don't answer right away, it's going to come out. The second item that we had discussed in the Legislative Committee was the idea that there may be some additional online, so we'll bring down the pipe, one example being that in the Governor's budget, there's, I believe, it mandates access to online education. And so there was a request that we basically just put together a quick statement that highlights some of the best practices with online education, and Senate and legislature are setting a guiding principle. So we've about, and that is a short statement, and that statement reads, "The State Board of Education is committed to providing digital and online educational opportunities for Michigan's students. In 2006, Michigan became the first state to require all students have an online course for learning experience as part of the state's graduation requirements. In the last three years, Michigan has expanded the role of online education, and they continue to use them this year. State Board of Education likes to reaffirm its commitment to provide the online education opportunities focused on best practices. Strong online education programs include a blended approach, providing traditional methods of instruction by highly qualified teachers supplemented with access to technology, opportunities for individual instruction and group collaboration, utilize multiple channels of communication, including online telethon, social media, instant messaging, et cetera, and a student-teacher ratio that allows relationship building. The State Board of Education respectfully requests the Legislature expanding online education to include a focus on best practices."
Is that a motion, Cassandra?
Uh, sure.
Okay. It's moved by Cassandra, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Michelle for discussion purposes. Comments by Board?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this, I would, I don't know if we can put an if in someplace. Where the State Board, I would, doesn't have to say would like, just say reaffirms its commitment to providing online education opportunities if focused on best practices, or only if focused on best practices. I'd like it, likes us to have some, as you put, quality standards in there, John, that, you know, you want all the time, because blanket online education, I wouldn't say I don't reaffirm support for blanket online education without restrictions.
Thank you, let's...
I would say only if focused on best practices.
And I couldn't support that language, because it, this is pretty much blended instruction. We ran into this problem last night, because I was listing, when I had a chance to answer a question on, on digital learning, I talked about the 10% of kids who really can learn pretty much in a isolated situation with, without Skyping, without community support, and then went right into blended instruction. But there is a third kind, it's the Florida Virtual University model, which we sell actually through Michigan Virtual, Florida Virtual School, excuse me, that does include school Skype, just teacher Skyping, teachers available by phone 12 hours, seven days a week. You know, so there's, there is another model that's not delineated in here, and I would be very hesitant, I would not support something that eliminated that, because it's pretty healthy and good. Not, not as good as having teachers right there in front of you, but still it works for a lot of kids who don't have access.
Richard?
I, I see tension between the desire to be innovative on the one hand, and the desire to not take any risks, and only use the best practices on the other hand. So I'm, I'm not quite sure what we're saying or what it is we really want to encourage. So I, I just have a little unclarity in my own mind as to what are we really advocating?
Cassandra, would you like a shot at that?
I'd like a comment, too.
Dan, then please. Dan, you're welcome.
You want me to go first?
Sure.
Sorry, sorry, that's the two-second delay I was talking about. Um, the, the recommendation that came up during the Legislative Committee really was to try to, and Kathleen's statement is better than I have, that was kind of her recommendation. But I believe what we're trying to get at really is that there could be, you know, unbettered online education in and of itself may not be the best thing that we're trying to go after after state, but that there are best practices that are out there that really can strengthen online education, and we just want to make sure that, that as bills are coming forward, and if people are discussing these, that they're just keeping those best practices in mind. I don't think it means that you can't be innovative, and you can't come up with, with other ideas and other things to do, it's just that, you know, best practices are called best practices for a reason, right? So as you're coming up with legislation that mandates certain things, this is simply a good thing to keep in, in mind.
Eileen and then Marty, any thoughts on that?
Dan has one, too.
Oh, Dan was next, sorry. Thanks, Dan, I forgot. I'm going to, what we're going to do is get pictures of you guys, that'll remind me.
Um, so let the record reflect that maybe for the first time in the history of my tenure on the Board, or our shared tenure on the Board, that I agree with my colleague, Dr. Zile. That's not entirely fair. We normally agree before, but this is the first time it's, it's public. We've had many public disagreements. In any event, I think it's like, you know, much like the front-end filter conversation, or the conversation we had last month about the measurement of authorizer performance, and only allowing the strongest authorizers to continue to work, I, I would love for us to end up with a statement that encourages both innovation, or allows for both innovation, and encourages the use of high-quality practices that we know of. I don't know what that looks like, and I don't have the language directly in front of me, and there certainly is a tension between those two, as Dr. Zile noted. However, you know, thoughtful policymaking, I think, can create something that allows for both to still exist, much like the conversation around authorizer performance would. A high-quality authorizer would still be allowed to innovate. We're trusting their high-quality accountability practices to actually allow that to happen, whereas an authorizer who has had a poor performance record, basically has to get out of the game or improve their, you know, so on and so forth. Not to take the metaphor too far, but in this particular case, I think the same kind of thing is available, and the statement should reflect our desire to see ongoing innovation, but continued use of high-quality practices, but we know what these are.
Eileen, and then, and then Marty might have a way to recapture some of this, putting him on the spot here. John may.
Actually, I'd probably defer to Marty if Marty had a better solution. But I think the programs that I'm talking about that I don't believe are completely covered in here, if we went to Kathleen's statement, would be the Florida Virtual School model, which is in place in Michigan. And so those programs, if I look for the, the strong online education program list here, the, what I would add is, I wouldn't say that I, let's see, I would, I would add that schools need to foster a sense of community, which isn't in here. And that, but I don't know, it's so wishy-washy. But Florida Virtual does that, and it doesn't quite fit in here if we try to narrow it.
Just as an aside, even though that's, even though there's a, that's a little wishy-washy, I would, if I might just say, I think a reason to maybe include that, my daughter, as I've said many times, is a traditional public high school teacher here, but in the summer she teaches online, and she teaches recovery, credit recovery, so with kids that are challenged, really. And it's amazing to her and to me that for many of those kids, that sense of community they have there, I still can't quite capture this in my own head, probably given my, my age or something, but it works. And so for those kids, it works. Now, for other kids, it would be the worst thing in the world, I could, you know, I think of my own three kids, I'm not sure two of them would fit in that mindset at all, but it was, I'm reaffirming the community piece was a surprise to her and to me that they feel a real sense of community online.
So let me give you the geezer anecdotal story. My kid, a year ago, was Skyping, building houses on Minecraft with, he had it at 10 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday. And I've said, "You can't do this, it's early in the morning." "I have to, Mom." Because one of these kids is in Saudi Arabia, and the other one is in Australia, and they both go to bed at 10:00. And currently, he's collaborating with a young, a girl, an 11-year-old girl in Ireland. So it, you know, we don't, we don't, where does this stuff come from? From the internet. But they're people, they have faces, he understands who they are. So we have to honor that with, with the kids we got in school right now.
Kathleen, please. And John. Kathleen, please, John and Michelle.
You know, I've been reading studies and reports on online, the results of online education, and it, from the ones I've been reading lately, it would seem that students have to be disciplined, they have to be motivated if they're going to be doing it online. Poorer students, both economically and academically, don't benefit as much, or they do, they don't do well with just online. And I don't want to see online programs that are just online with, there's no interaction with a teacher. And some of these new private companies, and that's what they're doing. And you can't just put, especially elementary school children, I think, in front of a computer without substantial teacher support and involvement. For, you know, a live human being that's working with these kids, because they need relationship building as well as they need academic instruction. And just to, just to expand online and say we support online education, I could not go along with that. Because I think we have to, we have to put some caveats on it. And it really concerns me that we're going more and more in this direction, and there's more and more online, and they're, at college level, they have these courses with 200,000 students and, and all of that. But we're dealing with, with individual children and students in our schools, and they have to have, we, there's something very vital about the relationship building that goes on in a school between teachers and students. And we, I don't think we can eliminate that, and the... and students, and I don't think we can eliminate that, and the, just to say we support online education, I could not support that, so.
Do you think, do you think that, I have that, I agree with that, by the way, and I thought that Cassandra's statement on that last bullet maybe covered that, and I didn't hear anyone trying to take that out, where it says, "A student-to-teacher ratio that allows for relationship building."
Okay, that's, that's good, I like that.
That might cover the umbrella aspect of that, that it's even inferring on a so-called full-time online.
Maybe not allows, it provides for, instead of allows, I would say provides for relationship building.
That, okay.
Okay.
Is that okay with folks, that provides for? And I think it was Michelle, and then Richard? Or, I'm sorry, John, then Michelle, then Richard, thank you.
I was just listening and trying to see if there's a way to make a summary sentence that captured the different points, so if, listening to what people think might be important, if the last sentence read, "The State of Education respectfully requests that legislation expanding online education be informed by best practice, allow for innovation, and meeting individual needs," I think Eileen's point about Florida, there may be some students, in some situations, who this is the way they learn best. But I would add this last point, but with a clear expectation of delivering college and career-ready skills and standards. That's the quality control piece that I care about. So I was wanting to, some statement that says, "Informed by these best practices, generally, but also allowing for innovation and meeting individual needs, with a clear expectation of delivering college and career-ready skills and standards," or something like that, would be appropriate.
Allows for innovation, and, okay, that sounded pretty, I didn't write it all down, but.
Spirit of that sound good to board? I see nods, and how about the two folks I can't see, are those okay? Dan and.
How do you do, Steve?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Michelle, and then Richard?
I'm glad you brought up the issue of individual needs. They received a communication from a mother, who's a Detroit suburb school leader, and she had a special needs kid who needs to catch up, but she's not, she's having a hard time finding access to, or not specially, specialized kid learning disabled, so she, so her son can graduate on time, and it seems like it's very difficult to find programs for those. So I would want to make sure that, with that language about meeting individual needs, to make it clear that this has to be, be able to be adapted to children with all sorts of learning abilities. The other thing I just wanted to say about, there are studies that have been done on online learning, and I had an opportunity to talk to one of the professors at Wayne State, who has spent his whole career studying this, and from my understanding, and what he's, you know, and how he's informed me, and the studies that he's shared with me, is that the blended approach is the most effective approach. It is the high, it is the one that gets the best results. And then there's a, there's a program that's really exemplary in, is it Sinclair County? I hope I'm doing it right. And what it, what they do is, they actually don't just cut the kids loose, they have them come in, in a brick and mortar, learn how to use the equipment, learn how to really become more sophisticated with the online stuff, then once they can show that they can do the work, then they let them go. But it's, but they develop this relationship with the, with the teachers, and then they can, and so there are, there are things that are, that are very good, and the MOOCs are finding out these, you know, these massive online courses, MOOCs, whatever they are, there's all sorts of negative stuff coming out, and one of the issues is accountability, where you don't even know who's taking the test. And I think there really needs to be some way to make sure that, you know, if they're coming in for testing, and I think that's what, there's this idea of having them come together, but I would consider adding maybe something about, around accountability, where if they come, if they have to take a test, they have to come to a place that's proctored and show an ID and take the test, because how do you know who's mastering the content if you don't do that? And it doesn't have to be that they have to come all the way to, you know, from up the UP, they could have things, you know, wherever, so, but, so those are just some of my concerns, but I think it's a, it's a good document, the only thing that I would want is that it has assurances of accountability built in, to ensure that the.
That the student, is the student.
Yeah, the student is actually the student.
Good point.
That's good, I would buy that.
I think Richard was next, and then, do I have that right?
I think so.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to second some of what Kathy was, was saying. If this, I'm in favor of online learning and technology, insofar as it helps us reach educational goals, but not for its own sake, and.
That's a good way of putting it.
So I guess, I think that's the issue for me, I'm in favor of, you know, opening doors to what will help some students, maybe all students, but I don't, I don't presume, and I think every school will make its own decisions as to what tools are useful to it.
Good point. And in addition to Dan's comment earlier, I think this is landmark, Richard agrees with Kathleen in a very significant way, we're on all cylinders here today. Kath, did you have something again? Please.
Is it important that we do this one today? Is this coming up right away? Marty, the.
I guess in the, in the sense that this is, the online requirement is part of the Michigan area curriculum, but that's also, you know, I guess, in the previous statement covers the blanket, or puts a blanket on the Michigan area curriculum, but there's also some online learning concepts in the budget.
Oh.
Which may, which may have, I'm not sure if the budget would get into this kind of detail in the boilerplate, but it may be a statement, but that's still, you know, the ultimate budget may be a month or so away, and this may be a topic of conversation when, you know, the legislature comes next month, it may be another topic of conversation then, or, you know, it's handy today, too.
We can say something today, I think we're close, we're there. Richard, I think your point was the same one I was trying to make with my last element there, that you've got to deliver college and career-ready standards, meaning.
Yes.
That that's the goal of any of this, period.
Yeah, I thought the way Richard stated it was good, it could be added to the first sentence, maybe.
I was wondering where we could.
To reach our educational goals, and not just, just to give them opportunities, just, you know, is that possible?
To help Michigan students reach, what was your statement there, John?
Oh, I put at the end, "to, with clear expectations of delivering college and career-ready skills and standards," as part of that last statement, I'm, if you wanted to say something upfront, we're saying upfront, "An online course or learning experience is part of the state's graduation requirements," that's focused on meeting those requirements, which is an educational outcome.
Yeah.
I was wondering where we'd put a bullet or a statement about student accountability, clarity on student accountability, and maybe it's just a bullet, but maybe Marty, you guys could figure out.
I think we should start with that second sentence.
Where are you, Cam? Sorry.
I'm thinking we should start with the second sentence.
First paragraph.
We started this all with that requirement for an online course, teach them how to use it for education purposes, and not Facebook, or video games.
Just flip the second and first sentence?
We start off by that, and then we might say that we, we are committed to providing opportunities in order to reach, to help reach our education goals, or when you.
That's good, so we're committed to, right, so flip-flop those sentences, and then end the, what is now the first sentence with whatever, Richard's language, educational opportunities for Michigan students in order to meet educational goals or outcomes. Okay, does that work for people? I'm sorry, Cassandra, I've given a lag, I'm just trying to process this through to closure here.
Bobby, Joe, you had.
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak during this.
Sure you are.
Sure.
Oh, no, you're always.
Definitely.
I heard you mention this word, and the big word I saw lacking when I read this was the commitment to providing quality online education opportunities, instead of just education, online education opportunities. Just being a teaching school, I've seen it used wrong. A lot of times, I've seen it used for budget sake, as Richard was talking about, budget cuts, so we'll have 60 kids in here on the computer, and I've seen it where the kids aren't getting a real quality, they, they're very savvy, and they can get around it, to know if I just push A B, A B, A B here, and I take these quizzes, and I get passed, and so I think that's just really important. I don't know if you'd add the word rigorous and quality, but definitely quality.
Well, I'm just looking, and I think that was definitely the point of my point and Richard's point, but we could also, in that first sentence, that is now the second sentence, it could say, "Providing quality digital and online educational opportunities." Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You see that first sentence, was now the first sentence, which is now the second sentence?
Yeah.
We could just put quality in there, I think.
Good point.
And not just annual digital and online educational opportunity. Thank you, Bobby Joe.
Other comments?
Did you say anything about the common core? No. I'm just pushing it. Okay.
Okay, I think the spirit of it, we have, and.
This is really terrible to sit here and edit it as we go along. I was thinking, if we start with the first second sentence, we could say, the second sentence then would be, "The State Board of Education continues to support quality digital and online educational opportunities," because we started it with the online course that required.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know who made the motion, I'm sorry.
I think Cassandra made the motion. Lupe seconded it. This has been a good discussion. Merck shook her head that, yes, she had the spirit of it. I think you did.
The letter.
Yeah, we'll have to help Marilyn when she.
Yeah, we may need to.
We'll get there, we'll get there.
We'll get there, and that, the spirit of this, we're voting on the spirit, and then always options if, when captured, if there was a wordsmithing later to amend, we could do that. So with that in mind, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Yeah.
And did we get the two second delay in there?
Well, thanks, thanks, Cassandra.
Yeah, thank you.
You should say thanks for no thanks.
Cassandra, and I'm not sure on the legislative reporting, there are a couple more items of approval of school improvement and strict discipline report, is that correct?
Yeah.
Before we do that, would you be willing, I wanted to encourage, I made this part of my president's report this morning, the fact that, I mean, two additional things. One, I gather, House Bill 5923, Richard McClellan indicated by letter to Lisa Lyons is now dead, I'm not sure why he's the one telling her that, but anyway, that was something of interest, though pieces may of it may be reemerging in different formats. But the second one, I hoped we could, and I suggested, we have, we don't have a shared position on the EAA. There's a lot of differences of opinion on both broad strokes EAA and details about it, but I thought it would be very healthy if we allowed, went around the table and allowed board members to share their perspective on the legislation, it is, it is moving, as you know, perspective on the legislation, issues, concerns, hopes for that legislation, so that we had that on the record, if that was, if you were willing to help facilitate that, or as part of this discussion.
I think that would be great.
Okay. Should we do that next, or should we do your other items?
Well, the other items, I think this should be relatively quick, and if Linda Ford is there, these are both items that are coming down from her, her area, and are requiring of the legislature, so if we could maybe address those relatively quickly, and then get into the EA discussion.
Right.
Okay.
Linda, please. Or, Linda, please.
You have in your packets, two memos from Cassandra Obrich, one on the school improvement legislative report, and we have staff here if you have questions, and the second one on the strict disciplinary, strict discipline academy reports. Both of these, in the legislation, are required that they be reports from you, and they are due April 1st to the legislature, staff put them together for you, and we need your approval to move them forward.
Can we put that, is someone willing to move that?
Don't move.
It's moved by Lupe. Your support?
Support.
Support by John. Discussion?
It's, it's an interesting report, because it's hard to make a report that says, it's a lack of, lack of data, a lack of information, and there's no requirements that they actually report anything, so.
This is a strict disciplinary, strict discipline academy, yes.
But I had a, I had a question about the Blanche, is it Blanche Kelso, Strict Disciplinary Academy, they have five or six campuses, one of which is the Catherine Ferguson School for pregnant, for pregnant girls.
Right.
And the basic, strict discipline is just basically students who have been adjudicated or are at risk, and, or have been expelled, suspended, and these girls, that doesn't really fit that pattern, and I wondered how they got into this situation.
So if we could bring Mark to the table, I think he can explain that for you.
Mark, please join us.
Hi, my name is Mark Itrum, for those of you who don't know me. I received your inquiry. When I received the contract for Catherine Ferguson Academy, which used to be a Detroit public school.
Yeah.
Detroit Public Schools decided to close it last year, there was a need identified, Blanche Kelso Bruce Academy recognized that need, and entered into a negotiation with Wayne Risa to bring on Catherine Ferguson Academy into that PSA. When I received the charter contract from Wayne Risa, I asked Wayne Risa, Steve Ezekiel and Jolia Hill, for a legal finding, something that answered the question that you just asked, because it occurred to me that they may not be in the fullest intent of what a Strict Discipline Academy was framed to be. They went out, hired an attorney, provided a legal opinion that said essentially, Strict Discipline Academies, while they are normally functioning for students who are long-term suspensions or expulsions, there is a section, a phrase within the law, that provides for students who have been referred there by a public agency, a public health agency. And so the students that were referred to that school, in this case, these pregnant ladies, or the young ladies who are in some form or fashion at risk, were referred by that agency within Wayne County for attendance at that school. And we have the legal document from the attorney that says so. From what we have, in terms of our ability to influence the action, that's all we can do at this level, is say to the authorizer, "Are you sure this is legal?" The authorizer pushed back and said, "Yes, here's our legal opinion."
Okay, well, thanks for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Okay.
The spirit of your issue is on the record.
Yeah, I hope the school is good.
And the strictness of the interpretation is.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kath.
Okay, thanks for the.
Other comments? Okay, I'll call a question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Linda, I gotta get this back to you, right?
There's one more, wasn't there?
What was the, or have I missed something?
And, and, do we do both at the same time?
Yeah, I think we did both, right?
Okay, we did both. I think I'd be on top of that, wouldn't you? So then, to John's point, to go back and have some general, for those that choose to, given that, you know, John's saying there's probably not a place where we would have a majority agree on something, but some may want to make comments related to the EAA, that's what you're offering, and this would be the time.
And maybe, Dan and Cassandra, do you guys want to go first? And maybe, Dan and Cassandra, do you guys want to go first on the phone?
Sure, Dan, you want to go first or do I go first?
You first.
I'll let you go first.
Okay. Well, I've reviewed what came down, the newest version, I think, of the EAA bill. And from my perspective, I think there is really two questions that we need to ask. One is, does the EAA codify it in the law? And then the second one is, if yes, are there additional items that should be included in that bill? From my personal perspective, I still think it's premature to codify the EAA, given the fact that state has not gone through a meat testing or anything like that, but we really don't know what the level of success might be. I'm not saying, I'm not opposed to codifying the EAA ever, you know, I just want to, personally, I think that when you engage in something like this, you pilot it first, see what the results are, maybe switch things around based on those results, and then you move forward. And we seem to be skipping a lot of those parts here. The second thing, so if you get past that and you say, "Okay, let's codify the EAA," this particular bill includes some additional items that I find personally troubling. And the main one is that the EAA was set up to basically take over the lowest performing schools and turn them around, but this bill seems to give them the power to create their own schools, whether it's within the vicinity of, close proximity of a school that they're taking over, or if there's an emergency manager in place, it basically gives them the authority to create a school anywhere within that area. This is completely contradictory to why the EAA was created, and I think they have enough on their plate that they don't need to be creating more schools. We need to be turning around schools, not starting more. So I have other sort of issues with this, but from my perspective, those are my two main concerns.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, so if I use the same framework, and I guess I will, one of the benefits of going first is that you get to frame the questions. So I think the EAA should be codified. I think we need options like this for kids that have been struggling. I think the worst crime we can be guilty of as an education system is failing to educate children. I just, I don't know what we're doing if we're not doing that. For the kids who we are failing, absolutely failing, something like the EA has to be tried. The issue of its piloting seems to me to not be a matter of codification. I mean, so we repeal laws all the time in the state, and I don't know why this is any different. It seems to me that the district should be codified. It's consistent with the reform district that was envisioned, you know, in previous legislation, and so it should be codified, so that it can actually function effectively in policy issues that can be handled administratively, or that have to be addressed in the policy should be handled. That having been said, I do agree that the bill includes all sorts of things that are not necessary to the codification of the EAA, and that I think should be handled entirely separately. Some may be worthwhile, and some are not, in my opinion, but I think that it's regrettable that all of those issues get tangled up in the rather singular, and I would argue, what should be the priority issue for all of us, which is ensuring that we're providing a new option and a high-quality option for the kids in our state that are most in need of one.
Thanks, Dan. Other board members? Kathleen, please.
Well, I have to agree with Cassandra that I think it's premature, because we still don't know how well the EAA is working in Detroit with the fifteen schools that it has. They have produced some test results, but we can't really verify them or get any information about them. And I think that we shouldn't expand that. I also agree that they shouldn't be allowed to be, create new schools. There's a section in the bill, it's very convoluted, if I read it to you, you wouldn't, it's hard to follow, one sentence is a five, like a page log, and you can't figure out where it begins and where it ends and what it's actually saying. Maybe that's on purpose, I don't know, except they try to do so much in one section that it's unclear. That scares me. So they can create, they can authorize additional charter schools, which according to the legislation, which I think is not necessary. If they're taking, as Cassandra said, if they're taking over schools that are not succeeding, they should be in the business of turning those schools around and not creating some new school that you don't know what it's going to be like. Plus, if they create new charter schools, as I understand it, charter schools, each charter school is itself a district. The EAA is a district, according to this bill. Does a charter school, a district exists then within a district? How does that, how does that work?
It's like some Russian nesting doll problem there.
I think they try...
Oh, my God, it could go on forever.
I think they try to get away with it somewhere in the text. I got lost somewhere in the text, to be honest, but I think they would try to say that it's a district who can have a district in it, but I don't know if that's, I guess anything is legal if they pass it, but it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound kosher to me somehow. So, I mean, there are so many questions in it that I, the bill scares me. They're trying to do too much, they're giving enormous authority to the chancellor appointed by the board, appointed by the governor, and they report to the governor in effect, he reports to the governor. It creates a parallel district outside the purview of the Michigan Department of Education and the state board and the superintendent. I think that's a mistake. I mean, if they, if they're not happy with us, they should tell us what they want, what they think we should be doing that's different. We are trying to exercise our constitutional responsibility, would be impossible to supervise, as it is now, the leadership, provide leadership and general supervision over that district, even though that says someplace in the bill that it is under our leadership and supervision, but in effect, if they create something that's reported directly to the governor, it's outside of our purview. So it's creating a parallel system in effect, and I'm just appalled by it. I think it's just, I'm just shocked that they have the gall to do this.
May I add to that point, that in addition, I appreciate you're getting the concept on the table, because there's also some language that looks like they could be a standalone state education agency, which we obviously, hopefully the board, I know you're not taking a consensus statement today, but I hope that's one at least we could agree on, that you can't have two state education agencies. We don't think the feds would ever buy that, but on the other hand, I don't know that we want to tempt fate, that, for one thing, otherwise you don't have the appropriate role, as we've discussed at other times, which is why, I mean, I'll speak for myself in this case, why I didn't and don't support the automatic put-in of schools, whether it's under the EAA or under the current inter-locals, and that instead, we have Deb and the team here thoughtfully looking at progress, and for those few that aren't making progress, then there needs to be a place, to Dan's point. But we think that would be, how would that, not on its own merit, you wouldn't want another state education agency, but in addition to that, it would defy the idea that we had authority really in deciding what goes in or not. It would complicate that, so I mean, that whole...
But I hope as part of this, quickly, you'll also share other issues that you see, so that those of us who want to advocate for improvements in the bill can do so, and I would encourage everybody to advocate for improvements in the bill as we see them. Who's next?
Michelle, please.
I was also looking through the legislation and looking through the legislative analysis, and it left me with a lot of questions, and I don't know if it's me, or if it's just the way it's written, but some concerns that I had, there was three main concerns. One is the consolidation of control, and according to this legislative analysis, for instance, it says, "In addition, for a public school operating under chief executive officer appointed by the chancellor, the chief executive officer would direct the expenditures and have full autonomy and control over curriculum and discretionary spending." So, you know, there's, what I see as an alternative school, you know, to improve our existing schools, is instead of having a system that seems to alienate parents further and alienate the participation of teachers further, which, if I'm understanding this, this concentration, where there's no elected school board, all this power flows from the chancellor, he answers to the governor, and if I understand right, Marty, can they even, does it take away the board at some point, the appointed board that the governor and others appoint? Do you know?
Can who take away?
Can the chancellor operate as a board instead of having that appointed board?
No.
Okay.
And just for clarification, it's, I don't remember the distribution of seats, but Eastern has some appointments on that, Eastern Michigan, the governor has some appoint...
Two, yeah. The governor has five, yeah.
I mean, still, I get the point.
The governor's office has controlling appointments, but they're all appointed, they're not elected. There's not, to me, there's very little independent oversight, and there's very little opportunity for parent participation. I know there's an advisory group that the, that you can petition to have at a school, but it's again, it seems like it's all appointed by the chancellor, it's not an independent voice of parents to be able to participate, and so I'm concerned with this lack of oversight by both the Board of Education or the Department of Education about certain, the credibility of the testing results that come out. You know, I've been trying to get the, or I've been asking to get the test results from the Scantron test that was brought, so, you know, held up and so prominently in the last, in testimony last week, just to get the data so that it could be verified, and it seems like that's just not something that's available. Maybe it is, maybe it'll come someday, but, you know, but they're using this as justification, or is being used as justification, to say how great things are, but yet there's not really independent auditing and oversight of it. It also concerns me with regard to dealing with some of the more vulnerable kids, like the special ed kids, special need kids, those types of folks, and the fact that the teachers, and when I walked into the EAA schools, I had several teachers pull me aside and say, "I understand, I'm employed at will, I cannot say or do anything." When I'd ask about certain things, they would tell me, "I'm employed at will." And so their mouths are shut, you know? And so that's another avenue where you might be able to have some oversight if teachers had the ability or felt they could speak out, but they, at least from my experience, they don't. So I'm concerned about the transparency, I'm concerned about the rights of parents to really have a voice in this process, and sort of this independent oversight of all of this. They also, that's kind of two in one, but the last thing was, I noticed that if somebody is now chooses, a school chooses to have the transformational model, it calls for further punishing teachers, that, so if, right now, my understanding is the transformational model is the most popular, and it holds intact the collective bargaining agreement, and it holds intact the teachers, and they can work together as a team to try to turn things around, and it seems to be the one that both school administration and the teachers, that seems to be the one that they go to. So now, under this legislation, it would automatically, if I understand correctly, wipe out the collective bargaining agreement, take people out of the pension program, it would make it, also, the bill would make it so that you could have unilateral pay increases, change the pay at will, no seniority. I just don't see what that has to do with educating children and why this is in this bill, you know? I mean, it just seems like a very, an attack on teachers, and I don't see it, and I think when you attack teachers, you attack education, and it's an attack on the kid. So I don't understand why that's in there, well, maybe I do understand why it's in there, but I don't agree for it, that it should be in there when we're talking about, we should be focusing on what is going to help kids learn, not how to attack teachers, so that's it.
Thank you. John, please.
Just quickly, like Dan, I believe we need a turnaround district, which the EA could be, if designed well, to apply a potentially better learning model, we don't know yet, that could help the kids learn. I certainly share some of the concerns. I think, I hope that this bill, and if it doesn't include some level of discretion and some flexibility in whether schools need to be put in, it should. If there's some growth and opportunity for the school reform officer or redesign officer to make more recommendations, I thought I saw some of that, but you're saying, Mike, there's a pretty strict provision that it's three years and you're in?
I think the current, that proposed language, which I think is problematic, would...
Right. So I concur that I would want more flexibility for determining if it's, if each school has to go in, or if they can make progress. I do think, you know, this thing needs to operate at some decent scale, so it can take some number of schools. I don't want to pilot things forever, but I think capping it at fifty is encouraging and appropriate, but some decent scale it needs to operate on, because we've got to get busy turning around these schools. I am, like Cassandra and others, concerned about, I only want it to authorize new charters to replace a failed school, and if there's any more wiggle room in the two-mile radius, I mean, hypothetically, you could charter twenty schools in a two-mile radius, so I would certainly like to have that clarified, that it is chartering abilities to replace a school that has failed, or to reconstitute a school that's failed. I share, an EFM district, again, this is an interesting question, do we want an EAA to take over schools in an EFM district? Are they necessarily all in the bottom five percent? It could be very good for an EAA to take over failing schools that happen to be in an EFM district, if they instituted a good turnaround model, it could be a very bad thing. So I think that's a large issue in this legislation. I also, I mean, I agree with Michelle that, and others, there's just, given the uncertainty and anxiety about this, it's got to work double, triple overtime for transparency and reassurance, and so having much more of that would be helpful. And finally, you know, if this is getting really to a state education agency, a parallel universe, then that is not what it should be. It should be a, again, a creation that, if the governor is the appointees, but it's under our leadership and supervision, but it shouldn't have the powers of a separate state education agency, it should be a state turnaround district. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Richard, please.
As I listen to our discussion of our relationship to this district, it strikes me that, and I think we've had this kind of ongoing, maybe little shift in understanding, it's the difference between being a coach and a referee. I guess my vision of the board is setting policies more as a referee, whereas some of my colleagues are more active and want to get in, get their fingers in there and do the right stuff, and that's more of a coach's role, and I think if we at least lay it out like there, maybe we'll think more fairly about some of what we're advocating.
Thank you. Lupe, please. I can see why we don't have a common consensus on this yet, but please, Lupe.
The total concept really troubles me, but it's going to happen. So we're going to have to wait and see what they come up with and see what we can live with. But I concur with what you said at the table, I just, you know, really, I, this life or this degree, we're going to go out there and do something, and so we're just going to wait and see, and there we have it. Hopefully we can live with, like John said, some common ground, some of the items, but I can't overreact, because it's going to happen anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. Eileen, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Eileen, please.
If I don't speak, I'm going to start eating Kathleen's cookie. So, some things are sacred, but some things are sacred to me, and I know to the board is the ability of children to learn. And while I regret that the EAA has to exist, to me, it has to exist. I focus on, I keep on going back to discomfort with certain provisions, the desire to speak up to see if we can impact it, but then, having seen it, having been there, having touched the children, it is one amazing experiment. So, I think our role here is, as Richard was saying, not necessarily getting involved in the management, but in trying to set the parameters under which we think children can succeed. So, I really want to go with John's suggestion, which is that we forward our comments and that we make sure that we're heard, because we're closer to children than the legislature is. Thanks. And I'm going to eat her cookie anyway.
Good.
This is the banner. I have my hand up.
Yes. We saw it.
She wants the cookie.
Please.
Go ahead. Okay. I just have a question, and maybe, Marty, you can find this out for me, but there's one section in here that I'm not real clear of, and that's regarding the sinking funds. And it basically permits the sinking funds to be transferred to an entity providing educational services in a building owned by the school district. I'm assuming that's the EAA we're talking about. But I don't see in here where it really makes a differentiation on who's making the decision on what happens with that sinking fund. Is it the original district, or is it going to give the EAA the authority to essentially take sinking funds? I'm not quite clear on how that would work.
I'll certainly look into it. I know, if everyone knows, a sinking fund is, it's a bond that school districts pass for the use of either building purposes, or physical plans, or technology, things like that, other than operating costs. So, the question is, I think Cassandra's saying, the bill allows the EAA to take sinking funds for a school that they, that is transferred to them. And her question is, who has the authority to, do they have the authority to take it, or how does the actual administration of the sinking funds occur? And I'll look into that.
They may.
Wendy's telling me a district may provide for that. It's not mandatory.
They may make those funds available. There's nothing...
A district may make those funds available to the EAA.
But may not have an incentive to do so.
Right.
Right. I mean, that, this is a good discussion. I mean, I think a lot of good points are made, and we in House even have had our discussion fully about this. I won't weigh in since there's not, you know, consensus here. I do appreciate some of the, you know what I thought I saw, and this doesn't need to be in any formal way, but I thought I saw that whether an individual board member was in favor of codifying or not, there is kind of consensus about paring it down to its essentials if it were to happen, in the case of those that really would support codification, but kind of, as the way Lupe said, if it was going to happen. And then, those that are in favor of it, it's got too much stuff on this. So, I mean, there's a way, maybe, it'd be interesting to watch as associations and other interest groups get more involved in this, how they're going to shape some of that, too. So, maybe there would be a revised bill that we would be looking at at some point. I don't know how that might play out, but any thoughts, Marty or Wendy, on anything related to this?
Now, since there is no consensus statement from the board on this, we can try to accumulate from the recordings, certain comments, or comments from the board, and forward that. We're not sure how many hearings are going to be for the EAA bill in the legislature, in either House left, so we can try to forward the comments on, because it's pretty balanced from what I could hear. I mean, there are some on either side.
Eileen and John?
We can also testify personally.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's what I wanted to suggest.
Or regen.
It would be very helpful to share the perspectives of the board members, and yes, encourage people to testify. And if there are some iterations of this, because unless it's slam dunk soon, you know, there may be some iterations that would be worthy of reconsidering for us, to see if we can be helpful in reshaping them. One last thing I just want, I forgot to mention, like Michelle, it would be a lot healthier, particularly given the temperature with teachers, if there was, in these types of proposals, some interest in having a period of time where, instead of dismissing all the teachers unilaterally, you were asked to, within a time certain, see if you can negotiate a new learning model and go to work together on it, respecting the collective bargaining abilities. That would help a lot. I doubt if that will be what is ultimately made real, but it would certainly help a lot.
Because if I may on that point, is, yeah, I would agree, because often, I don't want to jump all over principles, but there are occasions where the dysfunction is at the principal level, not at the teacher level, for that failure, and not allowing to happen the way teachers might have shaped the building. So, I mean, there's got to be a way to be more, this is one reason I think we're the right, you know, and some of us elsewhere in, but I think we're the right arbiters through Deb and her folks to try to get that sense over time, meeting with them regularly, seeing what they're trying to do, get an understanding of the staff and the principal, and see whether they're in the right direction, and then hold on to our, what I think is our pure authority, is to let those continue to succeed that are so, and not have some provision where they're just automatically put into an entity, whether it's codified or not. Eileen, please.
My understanding on the teachers is that they are, that the EAA is pretty wedded to the system that involves their mentor institution, and the rubrics that they know will work for instruction in the classroom. So, that the abilities of the teacher end up being filtered through that. The other problem is the legal requirements for their pensions, and, you know, I don't know who that would accrue to, because it's a different school system. So, I think that there are certainly issues that can be talked about. I think that they were covered in the original worries about legal liabilities and financial responsibilities.
There is a, the House Education Committee did post a hearing for tomorrow, and the EAA bill is on the agenda, 2:30 in the House Office Building. So, if any member can, wants to go, just...
Again, would represent, given today's discussion, themselves, right?
Right.
I mean, it's certainly proper to identify, I'm a state board member, and a person, how to say a person, but I mean, but it would, I think what we agree on here, kind of our rules, is that, not to imply it's the whole board, if it's not. And then, you know, to the earlier point, I think, I mean, I don't want to, this is up to Michelle, but any board member, I think, can use not only themselves as a citizen, but certainly their office to say, "I'd like to request information related to," in this case, some data. The issue related to the department is just that it would open a policy issue about who we do that with, and why didn't you do it over there. But I think, because, given the benefit of the doubt for a moment, well, I'll just say it that way, maybe they are open to sharing some of that, and I think it's totally appropriate to request information that you'd like and see where it goes.
Maybe it'll convince me they're really doing, I mean...
It might. You know, even if the data can be verified, I mean, this isn't just about the EAA. Anyone that's using short-term data, that's why we think our MEEP stuff over time and our MME is really the way to go. Because this is even a little caution for me to just say, I've said to superintendents for years now, long before in this job, don't just sit there and crow when you're, you know, and shout out when your scores are going well, because they don't always go well, you know, and just be, own up to whatever they are. When it's going well, that's great, and when it's not, we're going to step up to it. But it's kind of that trend line over time that you want to see as a principal or as a team of teachers, is are we heading in the right direction over time? And that's going to be the most important thing with the EAA, and why I think ultimately, it's going to be our system of accountability, it's going to hold everyone to the same level, whether they're a charter, an EAA, a traditional school, whatever. Enough on that?
I apologize, I got to run. I'm sorry.
Okay, John.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, John. Yes, ma'am.
Can I, I want to, I did go to the EAAs, and I've talked to some of my neighbors who are teaching there, and some other folks that work there in the EAA program, and I saw, and the kids were absolutely beautiful, wonderful kids, you know, that I, when I took the tour. But, you know, the classroom sizes are still huge. They still have these very large rooms. I've gotten reports that oftentimes, there's not enough bandwidth to actually access the online stuff. I've gotten concerns about the content on the online, that it's not really rigorous, and not really all that great. So, I think, and I don't know why, it's sort of like the same curriculum in every single school, and why they're not being more innovative and trying different approaches to see what might work. But, you know, I, and then, of course, I asked the questions about special ed, and was told there were no kids with autism, you know, I mean, there was other issues that came up, but I'm, it seems like there's a real focus on testing, and the kids are constantly being prepped for tests, and I just don't know if that's, if we're talking about turning around schools and giving kids a better education, just focusing on test prep and saying, "Well, look, they did better on this test, so therefore, it's a good school." I think that has to be taken into consideration, and if we're really looking at what's best for the kids. That's all. I'm done.
This is Dan. I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Dan, and then Eileen.
So, I've spent some time in EAA schools as well, and I think I've had probably maybe a more balanced stream of, that's not the right way to say it, but I've gotten good feedback and bad feedback from folks. And I think it's important to acknowledge that both exist. I don't think the model that they're using in largely in EAA schools, and I will say that I've actually seen a fair amount of difference in how it's being implemented from school to school, depending upon the particular school culture. I think it was a little more uniform across K8s, but high schools, not so much. And so, there's been, it's a mixed bag, for sure, but I suspect, you know, that's true of any district in the state. So, I don't think it differs in that respect largely from any other district or school in the state, where typically, you don't get uniform results across the entire student body, because students aren't uniform. They're people. And as a result, education is one of those complex systems where you can't guarantee results or outcomes. That having been said, what I've gotten overwhelmingly from kids, not uniformly, not all of them, but in significant majority, is that they, the kids who are there are having a good experience, that they like their teachers, they think their teachers care about them, they like their teachers, they need their kids who are at the same school as last year, for whom, by the way, the MEEP results, you know, were devastatingly poor. Those kids are largely saying that their teachers care about them more, and they feel like they're doing better in school, and learning more effectively, and the like. And at the end of the day, that, for me, is what it's about. It's not uniform. I think there are all sorts of challenges and problems that the district will have to address as it matures. But I think it should be given the chance to do that, and then, like any district, and particularly this one, since its charge is specifically to serve these particular schools, we have to hold it accountable for those outcomes. And I agree with you, Michelle, that we should get the data that is being used to support, or that is available, that data should all be publicly available, and not just from the EAA, but from all schools. The truth is, it's just kind of silly. So, individual student data, of course, should be protected, consistent with appropriate privacy laws, but the truth is, that this whole endeavor is public, and that all the data should be public. The issue really boils down to how we use it, not whether or not it should be accessible. So, I would argue that all public education data should be public. It's just silly that it's not, frankly.
Thanks, Dan. Eileen, did you have a...
What do we agree on?
Dodo. Dan spoke way too eloquently. I'm ready to say more than, "That's my thinking, too."
Okay. Well, this has been, as John might say, fulsome. I'm going to repeat that to him. I'm not just saying, because he's not here. Let me kid him about that word. But I think helpful, the dialogue. And just maybe, another way to think about this beyond the EAA is, there's 11,000 kids in the EAA. I really don't think there's going to be a lot more, because I think schools are improving with the help of our folks, and intermediates, and others that are stepping up, and then ultimately themselves. And we see evidence of this every day, is why we shouldn't have an automatic. And then, trying to remember, you know, in this context, there's 2 million other kids, mostly doing very well, with good teachers, in 3,900 and some other schools that aren't in the EAA. So, it's not unimportant to do this. I get the structural issue and why we need to be thoughtful about this, but it's kind of a context about the real world. And I find myself frustrated once in a while, even in some work we have to do in House, because I want to spend as much time as we can on the full 2 million, not on 11,000, or frankly, in another area, you know, not to just say the EAA. Some other times, we're focused on a small subgroup when, you know, we've got a big enterprise that we have to help with. But this is excellent. Coach or referee, I think it's worth having these kind of dialogues, and helpful, and we'll pass those comments on, as Marty said. Yes, ma'am?
Most of the EA schools in the east side of the state?
They're all Detroit right now. And the reason they are, is the current law allows an emergency manager to put them in without our input. So, we haven't put any in at the department. And as I said, we're hopeful about so many of them that Deb and Linda and other folks are working with, and there's probably a couple that are finding it hard to get their team together. But that's out of 4,000. So, I think in general, we're, you know, we should be proud of the system and the folks that work in it, and I really do appreciate the pro-teacher comments that are being made, because it is hard in these commentaries to not feel like this is an attack, when sometimes, we're talking system issues, but feel like people issues. So, I think we're at the end. We moved around a little bit today with items, but I think we've concluded, and appreciate the dialogue, and see you in April.
I can go to the tape.
You have something in writing, don't you?
Yeah. You know, I don't know if I got it. I would, you know, I would edit this a lot more.
Well, I'm going to, I can get on the tape.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if you don't, I thought you had it written down.
Well, I have this. I can give you this.
Okay. And you saw this, obviously?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. This can be, this is, and this is the, this is, take this out.